Okay, we are reconvened from the work session and since we've been in session now, I'll ask that we stand at this time, the invocation, Tracy will lead us in that and the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this wonderful day and a chance that we've had to enjoy the beauty of the earth around us and our city and all of the wonderful blessings you bestowed on us. Thank you for the opportunity we have to work for our city and work with others and please be with us, grant us wisdom as we carry on our business and help us in all of our deliberations with your wisdom. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a special presentation that will not be awarded tonight, those folks did not show up. But I would like to take this opportunity and if council will allow me, to read a letter. You know, you don't get these very often and sometimes, you know, we've been talking about the budget for a while, we've been talking about all the problems that we have from the city standpoint, but I'd like to read a letter that I received from the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. Dear Mayor, I'm writing to you to request that you pass it along in official thank you to members of the city of Pecosin Fishing for Cure Relay for Life team, specifically Dave Callis, Deborah Mahanes, Jessica Woods, Bobby Wood, Bob Speachley, Frank Krieger and his wife Madonna. These individuals, plus a few regular citizens of Pecosin, Sharon and Ed Harper and Bob and Jeannie Craig make up the entire team who represent the city at the York Pecosin Relay for Life, which will be held this weekend, June 3rd and 4th at TAB. These few individuals annually raise over $5,000 in the fight against cancer. What is noteworthy is that the fundraising is done with the entire Pecosin community making it possible, such as the Pecosin Women's Club donating the use of their clubhouse, the Exchange Club donating the hors d'oeuvres, and the businesses and local citizens donating auction items. Members of the local businesses also donate their time and talents in major roles, such as guest auctioneer, that's done by Kathy Abel Nelson of Irish Studios. The auction has been an annual event which is anticipated by residents and we've been doing it for the past 13 years. It is rare that such a myriad of civic groups, individuals and cities can come together in such a positive way. It speaks volumes about the cohesiveness of the city working towards common goals with successful outcomes. The city employees are the unsung heroes of this team. For example, Dave Callis gathers donations for golf and collects other items of the Raffle Door prizes, that doesn't surprise me about the golf. Deborah Mahanes prints and sends out invitations and makes sure the city employees know about the event. Bobby Wood and Bob Speachley help us in gathering the items for auction and setting up and cleaning up. Jessica Woods serves as the accountant and all-around organizer for the silent auction part of the event. And Madonna and Frank Krieger are the catalyst for arranging the other civic groups' involvement. Sharon and Ed Harper, so are his co-chairs of this year's team. Bob and Jeannie Craig are longtime supporters of the auction, who have joined our team. A simple thank you to the city employees doesn't seem to be enough. We would like them to be recognized for you and the council for doing such a, for representing the city so well. I'll tell you, I am so pleased and honored to get a letter like that. Frank, you sit on council with us, I think that's a special thing that you do, but I think it's also, like I said, what a great thing to say about the city of Pecosin. I know that we all know that this goes on, but probably not to the extent. And I'd like, if we could, to have all these folks come to the next council meeting to be honored. Next item on the agenda is audience for visitors. Anybody would like to speak on any subject? Seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular session of March 28, 2011.
Second thing. Okay. Questions or comments? Okay, if not, Judy.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
A motion for the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adopt the minutes of the work session of March 28, 2011.
Second. Okay. No questions or comments? Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, and this is dealing with a request of the Pecosin Electoral Board to change the central precinct holding place to Tabernacle United Methodist Church. Randy?
Um, Amy, you want to speak to this?
This is Bonnie Condry, she's the Secretary of Electoral Board. We have met with Tabernacle Church and they have given us permission to move our central precinct to their church. They were in agreement to have us meet there. And I can entertain any questions that you have on doing it or...
I guess from the Electoral Board, the old municipal building wasn't working for the number of voters or...
Tabernacle offers us the largest space, so it makes it a better layout to have a better flow of the voters that are coming in, and especially with the presidential coming up in a very short time, we can get the people in there. Implement weather, they don't have to stand outside in the rain or whatever, they can come on inside and we'll have more room for them.
Okay.
And the parking is better across the street.
Any other questions, council? No. Okay. And I'll open the public hearing, see if there's any questions of the audience. Seeing none, close the public hearing and put it up for consideration of council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance establishing Tabernacle United Methodist Church as the polling place for the central precinct.
Second. Okay. There are no motion and second, is there any discussion on this item? If not, Judy, please.
I will point out that this is being adopted as an emergency measure and has to be forward to the Department of Justice for approval. Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on the agenda under new business is a resolution appointing a member of the city council to represent the western precinct. I could have a motion to postpone this.
I also move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. But, and there are no motion and seconded, I'll just make a brief statement. We have interviewed seven candidates for the open western council precinct seat. We anticipate setting up a special meeting a week from tonight to appoint that seat and that's the plan.
At 7:00 PM.
At 7:00 PM. Okay. Any other comments, concerns?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the ward of a contract for the purchase of a fire patrol boat and ordinance appropriating the grant funds. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, often we and others come to you asking for money for important things in a time that's tight, and sometimes we come to you telling you about a federal government mandate comes with no money. This is not one of those cases. Due to the persistence and dedication to this issue that Joe Breeden has shown and members of the fire service, we're here tonight, and Joe's going to speak in a minute, to ask you to consider authorizing me to execute a contract on behalf of the city, as Mr. Green points out, which should be to correct the scribbler's error in amount not to exceed $260,000, to be paid for with federal funds for a very badly needed updated state-of-the-art fire patrol boat. Joe, would you like to come forward and talk to the issue for a moment?
Just like to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to briefly discuss this with you. As the city manager said, these are funds that were allocated through Department of Homeland Security's 2010 charity grant, to the tune of $283,250, $260,000 which were allocated directly to the boat, the other $23,250 for training after we received the new boat. We've opted to go with Northwind Marine out of Seattle, Washington. They've got 30 years of service building fireboat, patrol boats and other various craft for the Pacific Northwest region. Their boats are also currently being used by Virginia Beach and Norfolk Fire Departments, and Norfolk is anticipating buying a second one of their boats, so that speaks a little bit too. Had a lot of conversations with them, they're very eager to work with us and build us the vessel that we want and that we need. We did look at several other manufacturers, and in all cases except with Northwind, we were going to have to give up something in order to get the boat. With that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on it. This boat has some unique capabilities through the propulsion system that it has, it's going to have state-of-the-art electronics on it, to be able to be used for fire suppression, search and rescue, as well as if the police department needs assistance with law enforcement, we'll be able to assist them as well. Does that, do you have any questions?
Joe, what propulsion system did you go with?
Uh, we're, this boat's equipped with twin outboards, 200 horsepower. It also incorporates a jet drive, much like a jet ski has, that doubles as the fire main pump. So when we're working in close quarters, if we have victims in the water, we're actually able to shut off the main engines, which have the propellers going, and switch over to the jet drive, which, you know, is much safer with dealing with people in the water. And this thing pumps an enormous amount of water, to the tune of at low pressure, almost 3,000 gallons per minute, which will supply our land-based apparatus if, if we're in areas of the city that are waterfront, which may have limited access to hydrants and other.
What is the timeframe of getting this boat?
Uh, once they start construction, four to six months.
Four to six months.
And hopefully with y'all's blessing tonight, we can expedite getting the contract done, they're anticipate being able to start on our boat around May 1st.
Randy, this is probably more of you or Joe you may know, I noticed on their, on their terms, they offer a 1% discount if paid within 10 days. Do we anticipate having this grant in hand so that we can take advantage of that?
That's an excellent question, and this is, we've been in conversation with the people that do this grant to request that actually they're paying us upfront, which they don't typically do, but because of our cash flow situation and our relative size, it's a big thing for us. So far, we've gotten a positive response on that, but that's also one of the reasons that we maintain a fund balance, so we have short-term liquidity. If we don't get the money upfront, I imagine we'll get it very, very quickly from the state, because they understand how big $250,000 is to our, to our cash.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that we use the fund balance if we, if we don't have it, because then we're just about to pay for the freight to get it here, I would imagine.
That's how we, that's how we cover our checks.
Okay.
And with that, I know, I've spoke with Northwind, and they also do it on a quarterly basis where it's 25% based upon when the keel is laid, when the superstructure's put on, when it's powered, and then final delivery as well. And we're purchased, we're also, we didn't put this out for general contract, we were purchasing this boat through GSA contract.
Did you write the city part of the contract?
No.
Did you write the grant?
Or the grant, I mean.
Did you participate in writing the grant?
Myself and one of the other members of the fire service worked together. I put the information together and he did the wordsmithing on it to, to make it sound right, and that's how we worked.
Who was the, who was the one that did the wordsmithing?
Uh, sorry, Travis Wright, okay, firefighter Travis Wright.
Let me, let me say thank you to both of you.
Y'all did.
Okay, the bottom line, the reason for that question is, we want to make it clear to the citizens of what you've done for the city by finding this grant, then applying for this grant, and then being successful in obtaining it, as well as then going out and finding the boat and the GSA, the appropriate GSA contract. Thank you very much for bringing this to us.
Uh, this is an ongoing project of about three years for me personally, so.
Wow, we're, we're just thrilled.
Congratulations.
I'm not, shoot, there's probably more federal dollars than we've received in my time on council.
And hopefully we'll be successful with some more in future.
Thank you so much. Any other questions?
I was wanting to know how many people could ski behind that boat at once.
You could probably put a lot back there.
But only two firemen.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, no other questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, anybody prepare to make a motion? I guess we have two things here, we have a resolution authorizing the city manager, and then we have an ordinance making the additional appropriation of federal dollars.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Northwind Marine Incorporated for purchase of a patrol boat with the addition of, under section two, after the word exceed, we write a total.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions or concerns?
Buddy's comment, or not to exceed, what was that?
Sixteen.
A total of?
Total of $260,000.
Very good. I thought you changed the number on that. Okay. Anybody else? Judy, please.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
And anybody prepare to make a motion on the ordinance?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we adopt the ordinance, make an additional appropriation for fiscal year 2010, 2011.
Second. Any questions, comments or discussions? Again, this appropriation is passed through federal dollars into the local city coffers.
Is 2010 right?
Concerns? Okay. All right, Judy?
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Very much, I guess we're looking forward to this in six to eight weeks?
Eight weeks. Four to six. Months.
Okay. Next item under new business is resolution making an appointment to the Hampton Roads Transportation Order.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution appointing an alternate member to the Hampton Road HRTPO with the name of Herbert Buddy Green inserted as the alternate.
Second. Okay. Any questions, comments or discussion?
I'd like to thank Tracy for offering that position for me, since she had it before, and I do appreciate that.
I think you'll do a good job.
Okay. And I guess before we vote, I kind of tuck this in, this is a change, and I appreciate it as well, Tracy. The council has come together, they've, they've been a great team since Gordon has left us to be delegate, and we have backups and now involvement by every member of council. I'm going to kind of read through those real quick so that everybody understands what all council is doing, then we can vote on this. Representing the Virginia Peninsula mayors and chairs on that committee with me is Vice Mayor Freeman. HRPDC mayors and chairs is myself. Only HRPDC and TPOs will now be myself, and my alternate will be Buddy Green. Virginia Peninsula Chamber of Commerce will be Councilwoman Crawford. Virginia Peninsula Alliance for Economic Development is Councilman Krieger. Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, Vice Mayor Freeman. Hampton Roads Military and Federal Facilities Alliance is Councilman Southall. And Hampton Roads Partnership, dealing with Dana Dickens, is Frank Krieger, because he likes to, he likes the way we do that. But anyways, for the, for the knowledge of everybody in the city.
I can't wait, can't wait till June.
Counsel has come together, and this is the way we've, we've gone out there so that we're more active as a body. So we do have a motion on the floor. Judy?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. Next item under new business is a resolution directing that bids be solicited for the lease of property located at Messick Point. Randy?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you know, you've received a bid from Port Messick LLC, who is desirous of entering into a 10-year lease agreement with the city for the purpose of managing the pier and leasing the boat slips. Prior to leasing any city property, you must go out on the public notice of that lease and to ask for additional bids. This resolution will allow us, will direct us to advertise that request for bids, which you have a sample in your packet of the public notice that will be advertised. We are saying that we will accept offers of bids until 7:00 PM on May the 9th, which is the date that you will accept those bids, read them aloud and conduct a public hearing. And after that is done, then you will adopt the ordinance that's in your packet, awarding the lease and at the term that you select at that time. So this will be a public hearing process and a receipt if there are any others out there that want to bid for this lease of the property.
So what you're basically saying is this is the start of the process in, in public, and certainly not the end in what our action is here this evening.
Right.
Okay. Council, I know we've all had a chance to discuss and think about this, anybody prepare with a motion to move forward?
Mayor, make a motion, we adopt the resolution of the council of the city of Pecosin, Virginia, directing that public notice be given of the council's intention to receive bids for a 10-year lease on publicly owned property located at Messick Point.
Second. Any comments, questions or discussion?
I did have one, I wanted to clarify, when, once this is, we receive public input, does another board vet this before it comes to us or does it just stay before us?
It's to you.
It's to us.
Just us, okay.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, and this is for business, and we're on to comments of the city manager. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, I have three things, I hope to be brief. As the council is aware, and many people in our community are aware, oyster aquaculture has become an issue that has moved to the front burner in our region and has got the interest of many of our citizens. At your next meeting, Mr. Ben Stagg, who is the chief engineer from VMRC, will be here to speak to the council, and his intention is to update you on what's happening with commercial oyster aquaculture and to answer your questions, and I know that some of our citizens lately have expressed some concerns about that issue, and it'd be a good opportunity for them to come as well and to hear what he has to say. So we're thankful that he's coming. I wanted to take a moment and express appreciation to the Kiwanis and Pecosin High School Key Club for their work this past weekend at the municipal pool. You know, as budgets have gotten tighter, one of the things we've done even more than ever is rely on our friends in the community to help us, whether it's the Kiwanis and projects like this, or some of the park renovations, or the Lions and some of the recent stuff that they've done, Exchange Club, I've got to say, every time we've asked, we've, we've gotten more than willing hands to help us, and the Kiwanis, this past weekend is just the most recent installment in that otherwise very much appreciated community support. And lastly, as a follow-up to something that, that you spoke to, Mr. Mayor, I believe at the last meeting, you talked about the Wendy's Restaurant, who was hoping to come to the city. They, they did go to the Architectural Review Board this past week and received the approvals they needed to allow them to move forward to full subdivision plan submission, and we anticipate that, or formal site plan, we anticipate that shortly.
Okay. All right, Bud, you got anything?
Uh, yeah, a couple of comments. I'd like to thank Randy and Jennifer for the excellent work they've done in the preliminary presentations of the budget. I think they've demonstrated that they've worked really hard to do that. I want to second Randy's comments about the aquaculture projects, apparently they're significant to many people in this city. I've received many calls relative to that, and I encourage the citizens of Pecosin to pay close attention to that, and it has possible impact on this city that, that I'm certain to be interested in. And I also like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your careful consideration of putting people on the various committees and so forth with you. I think sharing those responsibilities is good for the city, and it gives us all the opportunity to learn more about the business. Thanks very much.
Tracy?
I wanted to convey our appreciation to Tabernacle Methodist Church for their willingness to open their doors for the electoral process. And I also wanted to take a minute to, to express my, my really sincere pleasure to all of the people who put themselves out there to possibly fill the western precinct seat. It was, it was really a pleasure to meet and, and chat with each of them, and I think, I think all of us would agree with that. And there's only one slot, and that's unfortunate, because there was not a person that I interviewed that I would not have, have liked to have on the board, so whoever does get chosen next week, for those who don't have their name called next week, I would encourage them all to put their names into the city board bank and serve somewhere else, because you all are excellent candidates, and the city would count ourselves lucky to, to have you as volunteers in the city business. And finally, I wanted to thank Joe Breeden again for his work with the fire boat, and encourage citizens who may be interested in working with the CERT team, this Community Emergency Response Team, he teaches many of those courses, and I'm going through them now, and they're quite enjoyable on Thursday evenings. It's a long process, but are you the one that we get in touch with, or is it Lisa Holloway? Lisa Holloway, and I'm sure her name's on the, on the city website, but it's a good program to get involved with, a great place to start volunteering, and I'd encourage people to look into that.
Mr. Mayor Freeman?
I have nothing additional, I agree with whatever things have been said.
Okay, thank you. Buddy?
I'd just like to echo Tracy's thanks to the seven people that applied for the seat in the western precinct, they were all very qualified. Also like to thank Frank and Madonna for what they do every year for the Relay for Life, that, y'all been doing it, what now, 10 years?
13.
But, long time.
Huh?
Long time.
Long time.
But we, thank you.
A while, a while, yeah, that's more her than me.
Well, we know that.
As you could expect, yeah.
Frank?
Just one thing, you mentioned, or the city manager mentioned that Mr. Stagg's going to be here from VMRC. I know a lot of people who live on Beach Road in that area, there have probably been in contact with VMRC and VIMS, but if they have any questions that they would specifically like, you know, for council to ask Mr. Stagg, please, you know, email him to perhaps the city, or to, or call one of us on council, so we can ask the questions and get the answers. city, or to, or call one of us on council, so we can ask the questions and get the answers to, you know, the people who are most concerned about this, this issue.
Absolutely. I think that's a good suggestion, Frank. I guess what we can do is maybe come up with a question sheet and then provide the written comments back in the mail to those, to those communities.
If they have questions, yeah. That'd be fine. That's all.
Okay. Randy, you have one more thing if you'd like to add?
I just, if I could take off on the good ideas that Mr. Krieger and Mr. Southall both had relating to this, the VMRC representative is coming. It's good for citizens to come and hear what he has to say, but a lot of them are probably going to have questions for him, and this forum probably doesn't fit for that. So what I'll do is I'll sort of extend it, an extended invitation to Mr. Stagg, see if we can't get the library conference room, so that after he speaks here, the citizens that would like to go over there and continue their dialogue with him can do that.
Okay. Will we go send Cliff with him? Send that fool fellow.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot one thing. I wanted to point out to people that there are, we're accepting feedback about the city's website, so if any people out there wanted to give feedback, please make sure you do that. It's on the website where it's requesting it.
Okay. Okay. I've only got a quick couple of comments. First, let me say, echoing the comments of many of the council folks up here, the seven candidates that we interviewed, any of the seven of them could do this job. There is no doubt in my mind. I was just so impressed with them, and unfortunately, there's only one open seat, so six of them will need to help us serve somewhere else. And each of those people were, I would hope we could get them to help our city, so I was thrilled to death with those folks. The other thing, do you have the city's Easter egg hunt coming up on April 23rd at Municipal Park? Another unsung hero of the city, Tom Hartman, and his business, Atlantic Plumbing and Heating, is a sponsor of this and has been sponsoring this for 15 and a half years. So it's worthy of mentioning that when folks do turn for us, that we do the same turn back for them. At least he gets a mention here, and we appreciate that, Tom, more than you know. As well, we had a visit from FEMA here, and several of the council members attended that with me. There is reason to, for the citizens to stay informed and involved in that process, as FEMA goes back yet again through the flood maps, and this time taking into account wave, basically total wave action over the, over the land. So it could impact properties that are yet not impacted by the current FEMA maps. And we have some more follow-up questions on which we hope to receive answers to them, and some more comments to make on the existing maps. And that is all I have. We do have one more closed session, and this one is to discuss the disposition of publicly-held real property, and in this case, it is the property on Renzer Road. So could I have a motion?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
All right. Questions or comments? If not, Judy, please.